Okay, everybody, for my last and final time on Tuesday, September 19th, I'm calling the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Powers.
Here. We're going to have a moment of silent prayer with the flags blue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, Donna, would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, September 22nd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, September 23rd at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Any agenda approval additions and/or deletions, council?
I'd like to pull E3, please, from the consent.
Okay. Okay, now, our presentations, which is kind of weird to say, but presentation to retiring Mayor Mary Lou Powers by City Manager Palazzo and Vice Mayor Cruz, followed by a brief recess, but not before I say something.
You might as well come on down here, because I can't see through all those flowers. Hang on to this. I have a few words to say, not too quickly, but Mayor Powers, I'd like to thank you for your contributions to the city of Galt. You know, looking back, you have a 15-year history, or 15 years of public service to this community, which I thought was really amazing. I didn't realize that you started on the Planning Commission in 2002 and served for eight years on the Planning Commission. In 2010, then you were appointed to the City Council, and then you decided to run. I guess you got the bug. And you ran for City Council in 2010, and you served a term from 2010 to 2014, and was appointed as mayor in 2012, and served as mayor for two years. And you decided, let me keep going. And you ran for election again in 2014, and also appointed mayor in 2016. The years of service, you're instrumental in many of the projects and implementation of many projects within the community, and I could read a few of them, because they're pretty impressive. You know, Walker Community Park, Galt Place Senior Housing, wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, Central Galt Interchange, Pauline Heroes Memorial, Flinsey's Roundabout Project, Railroad Quiet Zone, Regional Law Enforcement Training Center and Firing Range. Today, we celebrated the Fourth Street Project on C Street. So, and I'm sure there's, you know, measure R and a lot of rate increases and capacity fees that I didn't cover within those eight years, you know, eight years of service that you've been on the council. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, I really appreciate, and I can't get away without talking about your passion and vision for the community animals of Galt. And some things that you've established, nonprofit for Perfectly Possible, to improve the quality, and for me, as a city manager, trying to, you know, team up with, you know, our animal control services and the community, you know, to address our community animals, I think is very impressive, a very, great benefit to this community. And, you know, that's something that I do appreciate. The other thing I appreciate is your guidance and relaying your knowledge to me as your mayor, and being on the council, of course. Then this last year, I got to serve with you as mayor, and I like to recognize that for your, you know, hard work, you know, within this community, and just to have a nice recognition as your term of mayor. And I wish you all the best in Arizona, and come back and visit us and help us with our progress and see our progress.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I had to keep a shirt, sweetie, otherwise we'll both end up bawling. Mary Lou and I have had the honor and privilege of serving on the council since 2010, and trust me, when I came on board, I was a total and complete neophyte. Ask me anything about law enforcement, I can do it. Ask me about doing this, this lady right here, helping along the way. One of the things I really appreciated about her, she's always been an outspoken advocate, and she always spoke her mind concerning this community, she wanted to move it forward. She played an active role on our council and still had time to keep South County services We grew together as both individuals and as a governing group, and I consider her a very good friend. The first four years, they were tough. We were in the middle of a recession. Other cities were cutting services and staffing. We weren't. We were growing, and we're doing a lot. A lot of the reasons we were doing it is because of the leadership of this lady right here. We all did it as a team. One of the things I really appreciate about Mary Lou coming from the rank and file is she was a champion of the employees. She had a great passion for the city staff, she still does, and I can say without any reservation, she fought hard for the city employees when it came for their increases and their being taken care of. And she inspired others to do the same. We've had many a conversation about the direction of our city. And many of the things that our citizens, our citizens community, you know, I'm getting hung up here. And that drive is one of the things that our citizens community admire. I've enjoyed working with Mary Lou, and I consider her a very good friend, like I said. And yes, we've argued and disagreed from time to time, but one of the things I really love, we always came to a common ground, and I really appreciate my loyalty. And I hope you do really well in your retirement, as well as you did in City. I was told through a very good source that one of her favorite things in the world is called chocolate or go. All right, look, they're from C, so, on behalf of the City Council.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy. Now, before we go any further, I thought we'd go through the rounds, so start with Councilmember Campion, if you had something to say.
Sure. I think a lot of the words that describe Mary Lou have already been thrown out there, but, you know, personally, I've enjoyed working with Mary Lou, well, it's been as long as you were on the Planning Commission, with staff in the Planning Commission, through your time there. We spent a lot of, a lot of hearings on the general plan, over 50. That was, that was a major undertaking. As a member of the City Council and as the mayor, I really appreciated your care and compassion for those issues that you were so involved with. Many of them were community efforts, and, you know, it's very clear, you're a very passionate person, and you care about people, you care about animals, you are an extraordinary individual in those ways, you really are. I have enjoyed working with you. Like Mark said, we haven't always agreed, but I think where we didn't eat, when we didn't have common ground, what I really appreciated was, one, your directness, you are not vague, and so you know where, you know where she is, where you're coming from. But at the same time, you know, once we were done here, that business was over, and we move on to the next item, so I really appreciate that. On a personal note, I've enjoyed our personal conversations outside of work, where we've talked about, you know, other things in life, and so I understand where you're at, and I really want to congratulate you on your retirement and hope you do the very best, really.
Wow, that was good. Don't look at me. It's been just such a pleasure knowing you over these years. You have such a heart for the people and the less fortunate, whether they're, and the less fortunate animals. Like Kurt says, we know where you stand. You are such a role model and such a wonderful woman, and I just appreciate, on a personal note, how much you love my daughter, and you're a role model for her, and I'm, I'm kind of haven't come to terms with the fact that you're leaving, and it's going to be very difficult without you here, and just thank you for your service to the community, and I think those who serve are the happiest, and you are one happy lady, and I love you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm basically faithful, though. I remember when Kurt brought me in, and the last few days, I've been thinking about how many years I've known you, and all the new things that I've heard, and I've been a fan of you, and, you know, oftentimes, people, you know, people don't think that you and I don't agree, I feel like you and I have a reason, I'm far more than a dedicated to do that. Especially, I have a feeling. Oh, we passed the general plan that still guides the city today, and we've got through all of the readings and went through the entire thing, and, you know, I think it has served the community well, and it will continue to serve the community in the future, but aside from that, you know, I always enjoyed our conversations outside of council. I enjoy a glass of wine, and you and I discussing, and then how sweet you were when I lost my father, and when my grandson was born. You've always been very caring and very nice about it, so we will continue, I'm sure, to agree with more than we disagree. And I love you, and I wish you the best.
I just want to thank everybody, and especially everybody that came here tonight. I truly appreciate it. I have met so many wonderful people, I hope I don't lose it, since I got here. I've got a lot of old friends here, and I've got some very new friends, and I, you know, there are very few people that I didn't like, and, you know, I have the deepest respect for everyone that works for the city, because it's not an easy job, and I know that you all care about what you're doing. And to my fellow council members, including one that's out in the audience, and, well, Randy's out in the audience, too, so more than one, I have appreciated working with each and every one of you, your love and your dedication to the city should not be questioned by anyone, and like all of us have said here, we can agree to disagree, and we have, but I think that we have done a great job of moving the city forward. We've got great people working here now, and it's just, it's a great place, and I know that the future holds wonderful stuff for the city there. It's bright, and it's a great future. Had the pleasure of working on Planning Commission, too, worked with everyone there, had a few crazy ones along the way, which we remember, but all in all, I've appreciated everything. I'm thankful for my job at South County Services. I am really thankful of the Police Department and the City Manager for getting my nonprofit for animals on board, and for the people that serve on that, too, because I think it's very important to this town, and I appreciate that everyone supports South County Services and Perfectly Possible. I'm truly grateful to each and every one of you, and I really am going to miss a lot of you, but, you know, Stockton to Mesa's an hour and a half, so you haven't seen the last of me. I've got a birthday party coming for my lovely daughter back there, my sister's here, and just thank you all very much for coming, and I really appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to break for recess now.
Did that again?
He said he wanted to do a public comment first and the consent.
Why did you say you were doing this?
It's on the consent count.
It's on the consent. We're supposed to do this before you consent. Please, can this light the candle? Are we recording still?
Mike on. Come on. She's not gonna come.
I'm just trying to get her attention. Okay, we're gonna reconvene to... Come on, council member. We'll reconvene the council meeting. Moving on to Public Safety Committee Annual Report to City Council.
I thought the chief was gonna introduce me, but I'll go ahead and just start then. Good evening, council members. I'm here for our annual 2016-2017 Public Safety Committee Report. This committee has seven voting members. Two of them are sitting council members, mayor, vice mayor. In this case, up until this evening, we had Mayor Powers participating with the vice mayor, Mark Cruz. Additional members are Lyle Laggie, Dave Dahlgren, Randy Shelton, who's in the back there, Richard Tellier, who's our newest member. We have one position vacant, and then obviously with Mayor Powers, you guys will do what you do, and we'll have a new member there. In addition to our seven voting members, we have advisory positions as a part of the Public Safety Committee. Obviously, the police chief is one. The Public Works Director, or his designee, is the other. Fire, as a member that will participate as requested, so if we have an item that we need them to be present for, they will appear on their behalf at our request. And then Parks and Rec, same deal with them. There's a Parks and Rec issue we need to discuss in the Public Safety Committee. The senior manager or other designee by the city manager will participate. Real briefly, the commission consists, as I mentioned, of the seven voting members. We hold meetings on the fourth Monday every other month, and our Public Safety Committee Secretary is Dana Wilkerson, the administrative assistant for the Police Department. Members of the public who are interested to agendize items for the Public Safety Committee and contact Dana Wilkerson at the Police Department and request that the item be placed on the next agenda. The next meeting for the Public Safety Committee is scheduled for this next Monday at six o'clock in the community room of the Police Department. The brief explanation of the purpose of Public Safety Committee is to act as an advisory committee to the City Council, evaluate any public safety issues within the community brought to the committee's attention by the City Council, city staff, or the residents, as I indicated before, and they make final recommendations to the City Council through the committee. Some of the items we've discussed in the past, or could be on our agenda, are things related to traffic, pedestrian safety, special events, our emergency operations plan, and other public safety issues. During 2016 and 17, we had six scheduled meetings. Three meetings actually went. It was a light year. One of the items we usually discuss each year because there are changes is the emergency operations plan, but during the last year, there were no changes from the county on that plan, so it wasn't necessary to have a meeting on that topic. However, some of the items that we discussed were speed changes in some of the areas, including West E Street, First Street F Street, Emerald Oak Drive, and others that were presented by Public Works Director Winkler and acted upon later by City Council. The committee supported the motion to present those changes to the council at a later date. We had some discussion during last year on a request from a member of the public regarding turn lane issues at Walnut and Emerald Vista that the committee heard, and we had some extensive conversation over a couple meetings about raised sidewalks in different areas of the community and replacement or some solutions to replacement of areas around where trees have raised the pavement and other things that the vice mayor was working on with the committee. Three of our meetings, the September 26th, the March 27th, and May 22nd meetings did not go, and as I mentioned, our next scheduled meeting is next Monday. For that presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions. Of course, Vice Mayor Cruz is a member of that committee, and Mr. Shelton's here present if members of the council want to ask anybody any questions.
Counsel?
Thank you very much. See you next year.
Bring your public comment, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address City Council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Okay. Reuben Epstein.
Thank you. My name is Reuben Epstein. I have lived in Galt for thirty-nine years and eleven months, which is a pretty good stretch. I have seen quite a, well, not quite a few, but a number of people leave the City Council for various reasons: jobs, illness, whatever it may be. And during that period of time, there has never been a consistent way of finding a replacement. There was an article in the Lodi paper this morning, pointed out that a special election would cost something like seventy thousand dollars, which is, I think, beyond Galt's budget. And there was a reference there to the possibility of going back to the last election and taking if that person is still interested in being on the City Council and choosing them based on the election results as the person to fill in now. I made that suggestion a number of years ago. Nobody paid any attention to it. I don't know if the state mandates what choices you have on choosing people, and the reason I made that suggestion is that I think it is important that the choice of a replacement be out of the hands of the existing City Council. In the past, they would choose somebody, and then all hell would break loose, and people were saying, "It was rigged. It was fixed. They picked who they wanted. They got whoever was gonna work with them." And I don't think we need Galt torn apart like that again. And I think a way that nobody can blame the City Council is a wise choice. Say, I don't know if the state would allow going back to the last election and taking the highest-rated person from that election, but it seems to me, and it seemed to me quite a few years ago, that it's a very sensible way to do it. You're doing it based on what people voted, whether it was one year ago or two, depending on the timing, but it's still based on what people voted for. So I hope, with another sheet to fill, somebody will pay attention and look into the possibility of doing that. Another thing that I discovered this week that is still puzzling to me is that the cold water at my house is warm. And I don't mean inside the house, I mean coming from the street. And I thought there was something wrong with the plumbing. I changed the valve in my kitchen sink, still the same way. I went outside, I have the faucet tied right to the pipe where it comes up from the street, and it was warm. When I measured it in the house, it was eighty degrees from the cold water. Called Public Works, somebody came out, and, great, it's warm, his idea, and I don't know how accurate it is or not, is that because of the new deep well the city's using, the water it's getting is warmer. So it may or may not be correct, but I suspect that other people are equally puzzled as I am. I don't know if it's the whole city. I live on the south end of town, right around the corner from Galt Bible Church. And somebody I know who lives even closer to that said, explained a lot because he likes to take cold showers, and he couldn't get cold water anymore for like three months. So I'm not sure what's going on, but I suspect that there are some confused people out there when they're trying to get cold water to drink, if they're not gonna get it out of their tap. And hopefully, somebody can investigate and put something out publicly to explain to people why they're not going crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Gino Farinelli?
Hi. Thank you, guys, for having us. My name is Gino Farinelli. I am a second-year teacher at Liberty Ranch High School in the Ag Department, and one of the great opportunities that I have in our Ag Department is to be in charge of our Community Service Committee. And so basically, this evening, we wanted to come before the City Council and the members of our town and offer up our services and basically see how we could help you guys. I brought a couple of the committee members here with me, Josh Hooper and Cody Lundie, both I have seen quite a, well, not quite a few, but a number of people leave the city council for various reasons: jobs, illness, whatever it may be. And during that period of time, there has never been a consistent way of finding a replacement. There was an article in the Lodi paper this morning, pointed out that a special election would cost something like $70,000, which is, I think, beyond Galt's budget. And there was a reference there to the possibility of going back to the last election and taking if that person is still interested in being on the city council, and choosing them based on the election results as the person to fill in now. I made that suggestion a number of years ago. Nobody paid any attention to it. I don't know if the state mandates what choices you have on choosing people, and the reason I made that suggestion is that I think it is important that the choice of a replacement be out of the hands of the existing city council. In the past, they would choose somebody, and then all hell would break loose, and people were saying, "It was rigged. It was fixed. They picked who they wanted. They got whoever was going to work with them." And I don't think we need Galt torn apart like that again. And I think a way that nobody can blame the city council is a wise choice. I say, I don't know if the state would allow going back to the last election and taking the highest-rated person from that election, but it seems to me, and it seemed to me quite a few years ago, that it's a very sensible way to do it. You're doing it based on what people voted, whether it was one year ago or two, depending on the timing, but it's still based on what people voted for. So I hope, with another sheet to fill, somebody will pay attention and look into the possibility of doing that. Another thing that I discovered this week that is still puzzling to me is that the cold water at my house is warm. And I don't mean inside the house. I mean coming from the street. And I thought there was something wrong with the plumbing. I changed the valve in my kitchen sink. Still the same way. I went outside. I have the faucet tied right to the pipe where it comes up from the street, and it was warm. When I measured it in the house, it was 80 degrees from the cold water. Called Public Works, somebody came out, and, great, it's warm. His idea, and I don't know how accurate it is or not, is that because of the new deep well the city's using, the water it's getting is warmer. So it may or may not be correct, but I suspect that other people are equally puzzled as I am. I don't know if it's the whole city. I live on the south end of town, right around the corner from Galt Bible Church. And somebody I know who lives even closer to that said, explained a lot because he likes to take cold showers, and he couldn't get cold water anymore for like three months. So I'm not sure what's going on, but I suspect that there are some confused people out there when they're trying to get cold water to drink, if they're not going to get it out of their tap. And hopefully, somebody can investigate and put something out publicly to explain to people why they're not going crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Gino Farinelli?
Thank you, guys, for having us. My name is Gino Farinelli. I am a second-year teacher at Liberty Ranch High School in the Ag Department, and one of the great opportunities that I have in our Ag Department is to be in charge of our Community Service Committee. And so basically, this evening, we wanted to come before the city council and the members of our town and offer up our services and basically see how we could help you guys. I brought a couple of the committee members here with me, Josh Hooper and Cody Lundey, both longtime patrons of the town. I am obviously new to town. I have family that lived here, oh, man, all their lives, Jimmy and Kathy Ashwandan, for those of you that may know them. So basically, we're here to present ourselves and offer up our services, and I'll turn it over to these gentlemen.
Yeah, like Mr. Farinelli said, my name is Josh Hooper. So we are members of the Community Development Committee, and the way that works is our department is kind of built around our Ag Lead Class, and everybody in that class gets split into these committees, and this committee goes out and leads other students in the department that are interested in taking part in this. So our goal is to have at least four big community service events this school year. And for that, we would like your guys' help, because it's kind of tough for us to know what would be most effective in the community, and we were hoping that is where you guys can come in. So we would like to offer our manpower, which we have. You know, usually, we have these events, we have Fall Ag Day. Fall Ag Day is one of our, or I'm sorry, that's the wrong thing, Day of Service, where we have a lot of kids come, and we'll split into four or five groups and have different community service projects that we'll all do. For example, some of them are hygienic products to, you know, shelters and things of that nature. So we can potentially get, you know, 60 kids if it is a unified, you know, project. That being said, we can't get 60 kids every Saturday. So, you know, it'd be very helpful if we could get dates or just ideas for the most part.
A couple of things that we really wanted to focus on were four or three opportunities where we just offer us as servants. As was stated earlier, servants lead happy lives, and so this is something we're trying to pass on to our youth and give them that understanding. So we want to have the opportunity to just be servants to the community and the people that have given so much to our department. I mean, realistically, we wouldn't be here without the support of the community, and so we would like to be able to give back in that fashion. We would also like to be able to be a part of maybe a permanent fixture in town, whether we help clean something up, or maybe we help some families that are in need. Maybe they're in a financial situation where the bank's on top of them, and they need help getting resources together to improve the house, to get it ready for sale, or whatever we may be able to do. Also, we would basically, like, I mean, like I said, some permanent fixtures, and then three opportunities at least to be able to go out and just be servants and give back. So that's kind of what we wanted to present to you guys tonight about. Feel free to contact me. My contact information is on Liberty Ranch's website. It's also, my email is gfarinelli, F-A-R-I-N-E-L-L-I, at G-H-S-D dot K-12, or, yeah, dot K-12.ca.us. Sorry, I had to remember that one. Feel free to contact me anytime. My cell phone number is (209) 595-8358. I know, I'm giving out my cell phone number. Please use it graciously.
Well, you know, this is broadcast, right?
Yeah, I know. I just got it broadcasted, so on that note. But really, that's what we're here for, just a couple of young men that are a part of this, and we're just trying to offer up ourselves. Obviously, we have resources like the Horc Ornamental Horticultural Program. We have a welding and fabrication program, as well as a new power mechanics program that I started, so thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
My name is Dennis Wise. I've been a long-term Galt resident for many years, and also been involved with scouting for the last 53 years. And my current position in scouting is I'm the Shooting Sports Chair up in Sacramento Golden Empire Council. I'm in charge of the whole shooting program out of the council. And what I'm here tonight to talk about is the new acquired land at the auction place there on Stockton and Walnut Avenue. I'd like to work with you in the future, maybe develop a program out there. I'd like to turn the place into an archery, Shooting Sports Complex out there. I'd like to have the use of all the buildings, and especially the warehouse, and the old house that's there, the old office complex, where I can do training, safety training for archery, and also Shooting Sports. And then later on, we could branch that out into, open to the public with your help, and we can make a big archery complex out of that place. And I think it would be very beneficial to the community. I'm not sure if there's any archers up on the committee or not, but right now, most people have to go all the way up to Discovery Park to shoot archery, and there's really no place locally. There's the Lodi Bowman Club, but they're way out on Highway 88. Out there, as you're going up the hill, they have a complex out there. So by letting us put a Shooting Sports Complex, let the Boy Scouts use it first, and then we can branch it later on with your permission, and we can develop it in, like I said, where everybody in the community can use the archery range at certain times and make it a very safe place to do it. So I'd like direction from the city council on how we can make that happen. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
How many kids, scouts do you have involved in the archery program?
Right now, with the co-council and everything else, it's quite a few. I cover, just to give you geographic boundaries, we cover from Redding all the way down here to the edge of Galt. We also cover all the way to Nevada Water, and also out to Vacaville.
Wow.
We are putting on an archery event out in the city, or, excuse me, out there at the Yoman Bowman Club, which is right out there by Davis, and that'll be September 30th. We actually opened up a 3D archery range along with regular archery for our scouts to come. We're registering like over 100 kids for that. The biggest problem we have locally is that there's no land to put up archery ranges and stuff, and we could develop this into more. I have, I'm starting to talk to the Lodi Bowman Club to come up and help run this place if we do get it in the agenda and working with it. So like I said, it's, there's a future there for it. It's very active, which everybody knows that archery's an Olympic program. I have access to Level III instructors. I'm a Level II instructor myself. Vicki Ashworth out there, she's a Level II instructor, too. We also have quite a few people that are Level III. He's actually working on Level IV. The Level IV and Level V are actually working with Olympians for archery. But that's all we can, you know, if we can get people interested in getting there, we can give them the training. I can do Level I. Vicki can do Level I training. I have a Level III that can give Level I, Level II training. It's just a matter of setting up the dates and giving that instructions out, and that's where that, the old office complex will come in handy for that, because it was a classroom to teach, and then we go out and set up the targets, and that's why I like to have the warehouse, because I can store archery equipment in it and bring stuff out when we need it. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, moving on to consent. I pulled E3, I haven't read, but I was informed we need to have it, motion and a second, and vote it on before we can actually go ahead and read it, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hewer. Second by Councilmember Lamson. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye. And with that, we'll read it. This is a proclamation by the City Council of Galt, California, recognizing the 25th anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of Galt. The Kiwanis Club of Galt was chartered in June 1992 with 25 members. The members of the Kiwanis Club of Galt are devoted to improving the world, one child and one community at a time. The club has taken part in many service projects, including Adopt a Family during the holidays, back-to-school shopping for the underprivileged children, and the Fall Festival for all the children in the community. The Kiwanis Club of Galt supports the Kiwanis Family Houses in Sacramento, which provides temporary housing and support to families with seriously ill or injured children and adults being treated at the University of California Davis Medical Center. The Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and the opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. Third, board is resolved by the City Council of the City of Galt, California. We hereby recognize the Kiwanis Club of Galt for the 25 years of service to the community. And I believe we have a member of the Kiwanis Club out here. Ms. Haglund, could you speak, step up, please?
I believe that's the president.
Oh, thank you very much for this. I can't believe it's been 25 years. I'm a charter member, so been there the entire time. We do great projects in the city. One of the things we do with the city is our Day at the Pool, where we let all the kids in free, and then we pay the city back. So nobody has to do a hardship. You don't have to ask the kids how much their parents make. I know you don't do that anyway, but it lets all these kids in that normally might not be able to go to the pool. So anyway, and we enjoy partnering with the city on our dog park out on the east side. So thank you very much for this.
Do I have a motion for the remaining consent? Actually, do you want to read it first? A vote.
Minutes of the regular meeting of September 5, 2017. Receive and file warrants for a period ending September 5, 2017. Designation of the city manager to execute a program supplement with the California Department of Transportation for federal aid funding for the South Galt Safe Routes to School and Rehabilitation and Sacramento Area Council of Governments Bicycle and Pedestrian Project. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to Cooperation Agreement with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and designation of city manager for administration of the City of Galt Community Development Block Grant Program activities.
And we have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye. We have the unanimous vote. Moving on to City Council's Office, discretionary funds. Councilmember Lamson?
Yes, I asked to donate the rest of my discretionary funds, $500, to the Community Emergency Response Team. They gave a presentation at the last meeting, and I know their funding has been declining, and they serve at all our city events without charging, and just want to help make sure that that continues to happen.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So a vote.
Motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye. We have unanimous vote. Moving on to City Attorney's Office, vacancy on city council.
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor Cruz and council members. I am here to go over the state law requirements for filling a vacancy on the city council and to then seek direction from you as to how you'd like to proceed with filling that vacancy. So the state law basically gives you two options, to either make an appointment to fill the vacancy or call a special election. Unfortunately, the state law gives you a very limited period of time to do that, to either make the appointment or call the special election. It's 60 days, which actually used to be 30 days, slightly longer, but now it's been extended to 60 days. The appointee would then fill the vacancy for the remainder of Mayor Powers' terms, which would be until December 2018. So the 60 days will run in mid-November, around November 18th of this year. So the appointment option, I think we heard a question this evening about whether the state law gives any restrictions on how that's done. The basic answer is no. The council has discretion in how you want to fill that vacancy. Through the appointment process, I laid out some options in the staff report that I've seen in other places or other agencies have considered. And I think the city council here has also had to do appointments, which you could do by calling for applications. You could appoint somebody, as you heard this evening, from the prior election. You could call for nominations and appoint from that process, so it really is within your discretion. The difficult part is that it's supposed to be done under the government code within the 60 days, so if there is interest in pursuing the appointment process, we would ask that you get that process started quickly, direct the city clerk to solicit applications if that's the desire to proceed with that option. We've included a application form in the packet as an example of what you could include to request from individuals, and a sample timeline, a suggested timeline to follow, which would, because of the 60-day timeline, we've suggested listening applications over a two- or three-week period at the most, with the hope of either a September 3 meeting or possibly a special meeting thereafter, reviewing the applications, and deciding, maybe based on the number of applications, what next steps you want to do. The other option is a special election. Under the code, if you call a special election, you would need to set it for the next regular election, which under the elections code is April 10, 2018. The biggest difference between those two options is not only that you have a longer vacancy, obviously, waiting for the election is the expense. I did reach out to the Sacramento County Elections Office to get a ballpark. She did clarify that the estimates I provided in the staff report, which are six figures, with the lowest at about $125,000, I believe, that that is a ballpark, so it's not an absolute. It will change, you know, depending on the exact process of the election and the number of registered voters at the time, but it does give you an idea that a special election is a really expensive process. You wouldn't be necessarily, if you proceed with the appointment option, you could still at a later date within that 60 days decide if you can determine on an appointee to proceed with a special election as well. So we just need some direction on that. The staff report also discusses, because the mayor has resigned, that at some point you'll need to appoint a new mayor. The vice mayor, under your procedural rules, carries on the duties and role of the mayor until that time. There's no specific timeline for making that appointment, and it may be something you want to just put on, put to the side until you've filled the vacancy, but just something to keep in mind that your mayor is selected amongst the council members.
Discussion, counsel?
I don't want to do a special election.
No.
I don't either.
So I think that's off the board. Then I would say then we're looking at an appointment, and it's determining the process by which we want to undertake the process for appointing. I personally don't feel it's necessary. I mean, it's laid out in the staff report. We could do interviews and so forth. I would, what I would recommend is to simply advertise for a week or two, and then make an appointment mid-October. That's, I don't know what else, what council also feels. I can hear that.
I think with an application, we'd be able to determine something, maybe not have a big, long interview process, so I agree with you on that.
Councilmember Hewer?
Well, it's a one-year appointment. My concern is that recently, I looked into Citrus Heights and Rancho Cudover recently lost council members due to, they both passed away on the same day. And so in Citrus Heights, they appointed a member from the Planning Commission, and in Rancho Cudover, they appointed the highest vote getter from the last election that was not seated. So that's how other councils have handled it. This council's also done similar things. I mean, it's actually how Mary Lou ended up being appointed, was because she was the highest vote getter in the previous election and came off of the Planning Commission. And that's how she was appointed. So I think there is something to say about us having somebody on board who has knowledge and doesn't have a huge learning curve, because in one year, there's not a lot of time for a learning curve, and all of us know in our first year, it's a learning curve. So I really think that we need to, in making an appointment, look to people who have some experience and have some prior knowledge, because we don't have, we have some really big issues on the horizon in the next year, and we need council members who can engage in the process.
I agree. I agree. I have a question for Kimberly. I have a question for Kimberly. If we do the open process like Councilmember Campion's mentioning, that also includes former council members, is it not?
Yes, it includes, if you open the application process, it could be whoever submits an application.
So, it gives us a broader range of experience as far as potential candidates?
Yes.
Sure.
And those that have run in prior elections.
Right.
As long as they're still residents of the community.
That would be a must.
We're one of the requirements. I looked at the calendar, and I don't know what council thinks, but if, and I don't know where we're going to advertise. Obviously, we should advertise in the local newspaper. We wouldn't be able to get anything, I think, formal in tomorrow, but assuming we gave it a two-week period or thereabouts, and I don't know that there's a big rush for this at this point. I mean, we have until, what'd you say, November 18th?
November 18th to make the appointment.
So, actually, how long typically, and I don't know, in the past, do you know, Donna, how long they run the application period?
No, I did not look that up. I didn't look it up. Seems to me it was from one council meeting till the next, so there's that two-week period.
That would make sense.
Yeah. That is what we suggested as a rough timeline in the staff report was, I think we put September 20th tomorrow through the 27th, since the 27th is when, a Thursday, City Hall will be closed on a Friday. It gives time to include the applications in the agenda packet for the October 3rd meeting. So, that was why we'd suggested that. Now, again, you can call a special meeting, or, you know, you're not absolutely tied to that, but that was how we come up with that as a rough timeline.
That's a one-week period we'd have. But is that too short?
Well, I would place it not just on the Galt Herald and Lotter New Sentinel, but it would also be on the city's website and Facebook and Twitter accounts. Plus, it has been advertised extensively already.
The resignation?
Correct. Not the process.
Understand.
I'm thinking the 30th, 17th.
I'm sorry?
Are they thinking, are they thinking the 3rd or the 17th?
I'm happy, I'm good with either one, I think. If people are interested, they're going to apply.
Exactly.
And I don't know that it needs to be a long drawn-out process, but it needs to be a process by which people do have an opportunity to become, number one, aware of it. If they're not, they have an interest to apply, so. I'm comfortable with either the 3rd or the 17th, probably more with the 17th, I guess, just because it would give people a little bit of time.
Is that in the form of a motion?
If I could suggest that if you're interested in, it sounds like, if there's interest in soliciting applications and then reviewing those applications in the public process at the October 17th, that then you set a deadline that would allow for the applications to be included in the agenda packet for the October 17th. So, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I bet Settles can pull it for us. Probably around October 11th, which would allow then the packets to be put together on October 12th, so the public has the applications available as well.
To be honest with you, I would rather back it up to the 6th as the deadline, Friday the 6th.
Okay.
Because if they're going to have an application in, obviously, as council members, we would want to review those as soon as possible. You could come in on the 9th and not have to wait till the agenda packet is delivered to review them. If they have, if you individually have questions of an individual, you can then contact them.
So, what was your date you were looking at?
I was looking at a closing date of October 6th.
So, can we do it Thursday, October 5th, because we're closed to the public on a Friday? So, October 5th?
Yeah, I didn't realize that. And that, what's the closing time? Is that 4:30?
5:30.
5:30 on the 5th? Okay. That's a little over two weeks. Then it would be brought back for the 17th?
That would work. On the 17th, we would hold interviews?
Make a decision.
Well, I mean, if we interview, if we do interviews, they have to be done in public. And so, I would suggest that we, depending on the number of applications, that we consider a special meeting to do that process, just because it could be a long process to interview people in public, depending on how many applications there are. We could hold a special meeting, correct?
Correct. So, you wouldn't have to, you could on the 17th then use that meeting to review the applications, and then depending on how many you have, determine from that if you would like to make a direct appointment then from the applications or conduct public interviews of all of the applicants, or?
We don't have to hold public interviews. We could just do it from the applications?
You could. Obviously, the discussion would be here, at the October 17th.
Yeah, it needs to be done in public.
Yes, yes. So, you could, we would have to be careful with the agenda then that it would appoint, so that's why we would probably suggest that you review the applications at the October 17th meeting, and then we would agendize for a meeting after that. It could be in the November 7th meeting for the appointment.
Kimberly, is there any guidelines regarding council members meeting with the applicants?
There are not.
So, it, there's no concern, there would be no concern regarding Brown Act violations if you're having successive meetings with an applicant?
You couldn't?
Got applicants meeting with each one of us?
So, under the Brown Act, you could meet individually with the applicants, but you could not be conveying information as to what other council members are asking. So, it'd be a difficult spot, I think, for the applicant to be put into, to make sure that they're?
Particularly because the applicants don't know regarding the Brown Act?
Right, they may not be as familiar with the Brown Act. So, I would, you could, it's, as to your discretion as to what parameters you'd like to put on that. I think your procedure, your council procedures do, you know, with other types of applications, you know, discourage people reaching out to you individually, you know, that you necessarily, you could adopt a procedure like that or suggest that, you know, there not be those. I mean, that's within your discretion as to what type of process you'd like to use. So, the Brown Act wouldn't prohibit it. It would just, it would, it'd be a more difficult process to make sure that we didn't run into a problem.
Well, it could put the council members in a situation of, if the applicant starts talking about what another council member said or a decision made by another council member and?
Correct.
If we held a, if we held a separate meeting just for that purpose, similar to how we select city attorneys, city managers, and so forth as a council, would it not make sense that we have a separate meeting, have our questions all set out that we're going to be asking as a group, and if we have any others that are kind of questionable, run them past you, obviously, and have them like in the anteroom waiting and interviewing each one at a time?
Well, you can interview them, but it has to, it would have to be?
I mean, in this room. That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, yes.
Having them in there, but as they're coming in here.
Right. You could do the public interview panel like that, which would obviously eliminate the Brown Act concerns and?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
But if it's a public meeting, those applicant, all the applicants can be in the room and are.
Well, you're right that it's usually a meeting.
You can't tell somebody you can't sit in the room.
You could suggest that they, you know, that it would make a fair process if each individual came in separately and requests that. It is a public meeting.
I don't know that we've ever done public interviews. They have taken applications and, you know, people, you know, persons of interest, and any interview process was done at the podium at the time the decision was made. And obviously, people I know had conversations with those applicants prior to the meeting, and I don't know, I guess I'm a little confused as to how we would end up with any sort of a Brown Act violation, since the individual that's common to it is not a member of council.
Well, but remember, it's sort of your serial meeting.
Serial meetings.
If you is meeting with the same person.
Correct.
Which is like any other project where we would caution that you need to be careful, or, you know, the city manager, you can't be passing information through indirectly under the Brown Act. So, it just, it doesn't allow you to hold a closed session, and so, basically, the rules require you to have it in an open session if you're going to do interviews. Like you said, you could review the number of applications. You could determine from them, depending on how many you get or the applications that you get, you're ready, there's basically a consensus at that time when you review them as to who to be appointed. That could be then agendized for November 7th, or you could agendize maybe a special meeting, depending if there's more, and each council member wants to select one person from the application pool to do an interview or a more question-and-answer period that the public could attend, similar to like a workshop, and you could do that as well. So, you don't necessarily have to absolutely decide on that process now if there's, you know, obviously, if there's a consensus to move forward with calling for applications, a timeline to have those submitted, and then setting the meeting for October 17th to review those applications, and then determining at that point what, from that discussion, what to agendize for the following meeting.
So, you basically just need a consensus? You don't need a motion or a second on this or a vote?
I need direction, so I would, because I would, we should have a motion as to whether there's interest in a special election. It sounded like nope, but it would be good if we had a motion and clear direction as to the application versus the special election at this juncture. The motion doesn't necessarily have to preclude special election altogether, but at this time.
What's your flavor?
Do you want us to move that we not hold a special election at this time?
Well, I would like you to move whatever you would like to move.
I moved to second.
You moved to second, or you make the motion?
I moved and Kurt second.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Could you repeat it, please?
Not to have a special election at this time.
Okay, from Councilmember Lamson and a second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye. We have unanimous vote. Okay, so we've eliminated that part of it, and I guess the general consensus I'm getting up here is that we want to go ahead and issue an open call for applications, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and I'd like to put it in the form of a motion that we advertise starting tomorrow and close the applications on October 5th, 5:30.
Okay.
And that we set the meeting of October 17th for two purposes. One, review applications, interview, and possibly appoint. I would like to leave that open, so that we can take any action that we want on the 17th. And if we don't make a decision, we can always postpone.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lamson. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
We have unanimous vote. Okay, we have direction.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works Department. Mr. Winkler, approval of the 2017 water, wastewater, and storm drainage capacity fee study. Thank you, it's coming back.
Mr. Vice Mayor and council members, we're on what we hope is the final stretch of the council approval. We've had several study sessions. Last meeting, you did adopt and approve the study on the proposed wastewater rate adjustments, and we'll be mailing notices out to our residents in the next couple of days. Our city newsletter got out early saying you should have already received it. Well, they'll be in the mail in the next couple of days. And the other piece of business that was related to that is looking at our water, wastewater, water and storm drain capacity fees, at the more developer-related fees to offset the costs of constructing future capacity for certain new development. And we're recommending that if we get you comfortable with what the guidance has been given, that we would approve that tonight. Mr. Clarkson's going to, just for the public and councils, refresh your memory, just a quick overview of where we're at and what we're recommending tonight.
Mayor, council, and yes, it just keeps coming. It's got Duracell batteries in it or EverReady or something. The buy-in method is what we've selected, what we looked at over the last several meetings, and that's basically just looking at the replacement cost less of depreciation divided by the number of customers that we have out there. It's pretty quick to come up that per gallon of water and for the water and the wastewater end of it, and also the system value for the storm drainage. We, our current capacity fees are right up there with our proposed and the difference on them for both the water to one inch wastewater per equivalent unit and the storm drainage on impervious acreage. It's almost doubles for the water and the storm drainage, a little bit lower for the wastewater end of it. We've seen that, how that's developed. When we compare the capacity fees for both, for all three, water, wastewater, and stormwater, we're below the averages in the area of the different agencies that are around us. This one's water, wastewater, and the storm drainage fees. And then, we look at everything, what do we need for build-out or close to build-out? The capital improvements that we've identified for the water, wastewater, storm drainage in the 80 million-plus-dollar range. If we do nothing right now and we just accept what we have on the fees, we're going to be seeing 18 million for the water, significantly short, wastewater a little short, and storm drainage, again, significantly. Now, the proposed revenue that we have on that, we don't quite cover the water or the storm drainage, but we know over the next 10 years, we'll be able to cover the costs, and hopefully, we'll be exploring this in about a three- or four-year period, depending on the growth. If the growth starts picking it up, we want to address it sooner. But if the growth stays where it's at, 1% to 2%, we should be good for anywhere from five years to 10 years. Wastewater, we've captured everything for that in the proposed revenue that we have here. So, I've made this as quick as I can, so we can go away for a while.
I'm impressed.
We want you to approve the capacity fee study. Direct us to begin the notice process. And any questions here for council? Anything needed?
I do have one public speaker. Mike Cutridge?
Mike, Mike Cutridge, General Park Company, council members. You know, you was talking about the Brown Act. I'd just like to, just for a second, talk about, has anybody driven around the city, which I have, and seen how many lawns are brown? Do you think that's a problem with the situation with the city right now? I think it is. You know what that does? That tells you when somebody comes in new or a new business or something like that and they drive around, because people, they do that. Let me know that, because I know that that's what happened in our shopping center up on Twin Cities Road. They drive around. They look. And they see this brown, brown lawns, brown this, brown that, shrubs, no shrub, no this, no that. I think the city ought to take a good, hard look at that and say, what are we going to do? I think you ought to at least come up with some idea now. Maybe they're not to put grass in, but maybe there's something else that we could do like we're doing in our subdivision where we're putting in the front yard more landscaping of shrubs and that kind of thing and rock and that type of thing instead of all grass, because I think that's really important to see. If you haven't driven around, maybe you should, because it's, you drive down Elm Street, that's where I really noticed it. It's what I'd call the Brown Act street. That's what I'd call it. Now, back to my situation. Back to, you know, we've been doing this for a while here in the fine city of Galt. And that piece of property where we're building houses over there, which I brought up last time, we started in that subdivision about a year and a half ago. But before that, we put out, like I said to you before, over $100,000 in stormwater fees. Now, that didn't count property tax. I'm just talking about fees for stormwater for the 1988 Melrose. And I still say we've only got a few lots left. I think we ought to be able to not pay for that. I think we've already paid through it through many years of paying on that piece of property. And as you know, it's sat there many years, and we were paying Melrose on it, and it was expensive. And so, I don't see why we, the question I got is, is a storm drain, I was going to bring this up, is a storm drain paid at the time of the MAP, or is it paid at the time of the permit?
It used to be paid at the MAP. I don't, has that changed?
It does vary. Some subdivisions have paid by MAP. In fact, your subdivision has paid by MAP, so I believe your current on your?
So, you're telling me I get to say 3,000? So you're telling me I get to save $3,000 there?
But others-
If you're saying that, I'll sit down, I mean-
Other subdivisions do pay on a per-unit basis.
All right, so I guess, with that said, I guess all I'm going to do is pay water, then, huh?
Well, thank you very much.
That was easy. Thank you, Chris. Good job, Chris.
So, we've had several study sessions, and sought any concerns or direction from council, we haven't received any direction to materially alter the approach that a consultant has taken, and I think we're at the point where we would recommend moving forward with the public adoption process, and getting notices out, and starting the timelines for that public hearing, we're tentatively slated to bring that back at the same meeting as the wastewater fees on November 7th, but that would be certainly to the council's discretion as to the timing that you'd like to proceed with, and if, with that, we'd recommend adoption of the e-study report and direction to move forward, and any special direction you might have for us.
Any further discussion from council? You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hewer, second by Councilmember Campion, we have no further discussion, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye, you have an honest vote, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to City Clerk's office.
Last item on the agenda, City Council meeting of November 21st, 2017, and the recommended action is consider counseling the meeting of November 21st, due to the extended holiday schedule, that Thanksgiving holiday week, the city of Galt was only open Monday and Tuesday, we're off the remaining week, I'm not aware of anything on the agenda that's time-sensitive at that time, so staff would recommend counseling that meeting.
I agree.
You need a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hewer, and a second by Councilmember Campion, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to staff, Emily, you've been really quiet.
Just a quick development update, a couple items of note, the Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit for nine one-bedroom apartments for the old Steiner Building at the northeast corner of Fourth and C Street, at its meeting last week, Planning Department did receive a development application for an 80-unit microtel at the Royal Delta site, it will not take the place of the Royal Delta, the Royal Delta's still proceeding with the rehab, the site can't accommodate the two hotels, I'm anticipating the property owner splitting the parcel to create two separate parcels for the hotels, so that is in the planning process at this time, and that's all I have.
Mr. Winkler?
I've been debating whether to bring it up, but there's been enough community concern about trees on Fourth Street, so I'll just go ahead and announce that obviously no trees have been removed at this juncture, and we're going to be bringing in an arborist to assist with evaluating if there's a way to save, there are six trees proposed for removal to correct trip hazard concerns of major uplifts on some of the tree planter blocks on the east side of Fourth Street, and we're going to see if we can solve that problem and save select trees, and so we'll be giving more information back to council as we move forward, but we're going to try not to rush to judgment on that.
Quick question, follow-up question with Steve, the trees on Lincoln Way that were taken down just south of C Street, what was the reason, was that for trip hazard as well, or what was the reason for those?
I think they had an infestation, I think Public Works, or not Public Works, the Parks and Rec Department recommended pulling them down because there was an aphid infestation in the-
But there's a systemic that you can use on those that kills the aphids, so I, that boggles my mind, because I use it myself, there's aphids on, particularly on crepe myrtles and so forth.
Lasts a year, it's bare.
Yeah, I think in the future, if it's an aphid problem that we take a look at, it's a bear product, I don't know who to talk to-
I could be misstating on the issue, but there was an infestation of something that Parks and Rec thought they had to-
But if it's aphids, there is a solution, short of cutting the tree down.
Okay, I agree, and we, I think the approach should be anytime a tree is to be removed, that we look at solutions to save rather than remove.
Okay, thank you.
So Steve, I have a question, so, my understanding is, the trees that were planted, the initial trees, that the issue is, is as we've learned things, but, you know, many years ago when those trees were planted, there weren't root blocks put in, correct? And isn't that part of the problem, when they were planted, they weren't, I mean, the new trees, that we planted trees, the same tree across the way, we planted it differently, correct?
So, we haven't done a forensic, we haven't taken apart any concrete yet to see what's actually there, but based on what we're seeing, and the lifespan that one would expect to get, you'd think there were probably a couple of, in hindsight, a couple of errors that might have been made, we don't believe there are any root barriers that were installed when those trees were planted, and if they were installed, they weren't installed deep enough, the second thing that is readily apparent is that they didn't dowel the tree well concrete into the adjacent concrete, which let it differentially lift up more easily, we put in, I believe, 30 inches or three feet of three guards on all the new trees on the west side, and if anybody saw those, concrete being formed up, there was a lot of rebar dowels that went in, so that that lacked adhesively, and probably the third factor is that the concrete was a little thin in those tree well areas, which just sheer mass, and it's lifting it up, and it's been a repeated problem, we've attempted on several occasions to grind and minimize the potential for trip hazards, and the trees, as they continue to grow, continue to lift them up, so, it's not just something that we're doing without thinking about it, we do have exposure to liability and a duty to public safety, and so we're going to see if we can solve the public safety concern in a manner that will last for some years, because it's a fair amount of investment in redoing these tree wells, and so, if in the end, trees would be destabilized, and a concern for future public safety, if we cut roots to replace the sidewalks in their proper location, we don't want the trees to fall over in a windstorm and do damage to property or potentially to persons, so, so it's a balance that we're going to have to find, and we would, you know, we don't profess to be tree experts on staff, so, the thought is, let's go ahead and bring in a well-qualified arborist to help us decide if those roots are going to pose a concern to the tree, if we lower them down and reestablish the concrete, or there might be some options to not fully replace the tree wells, just do some of the worst on the pedestrian side of the tree wells, that might leave a visual concern with the rest of the uplifted box, so, we're kind of trying to find the lesser of evils here.
The one thing I would like to add about the difference today compared to back in the late 90s-
I was going to say, wasn't it almost 20 years ago?
Yeah, it's been some time, is the quality of the root barrier, the root barrier back at that time, I'm not familiar with the material, but it doesn't look very substantial, today the root barriers are much more substantial, there's been much more data on keeping them down, so, I'm confident that, you know, the root barriers today will accomplish their goal.
All right, Cora?
Can't follow the tree comments, we don't have any tree issues at the police department, so beyond that, I don't have any.
Gene?
Thank you.
Kimberly?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, we'll start down here, Kurt?
Nothing.
Paige?
Well, we enjoyed a wonderful Heritage Festival, we had a lot of dignitaries there, and they were asked to share about their heritage, and that was pretty interesting, and it's quite interesting learning about all the different heritages that are around here in the Galt area that make up our great melting pot, next year, we hope to use our newly opened promenade for this event, it was a little warm on the asphalt, a little overheated there, so, and your sergeant did a wonderful job with his speech, so, that's about all that we've had just lately, it was wonderful.
All right.
I just have a question, so, Mr. Gutridge's comments regarding brown lawns and brown shrubs, I mean, I've commented on it before, that, you know, it seems that, but my understanding is, is that with the declaration of a drought and state law changes, that we really can't do much if someone allows their lawn to go brown, correct?
Well, I think-
I mean, it used to be a code enforcement-
Yeah, it is, and it actually is more of a code enforcement issue, but we do have a requirement, I think Mr. Gutridge mentioned that, that when they're building, that they do have to have a complete front yard landscape plan, including a street tree, we, the code now limits the number of units in a subdivision that can have lawn, so the code currently reads that only 50% of the homes in a new subdivision can actually have grass, once somebody comes in, they can, and also we limit the amount of hardscape, and I think it's also 50%, but once somebody comes in, they can redo their landscaping except the street tree, that's the only thing where we have an ordinance that they're required to keep, because trees are really important to the city, and then, when mature, provide a great canopy for the homes and the street on those residential neighborhoods, but we currently don't have in the development code requirements to keep the grass green, one of the recent subdivisions, Elliott Homes, did go with an all, I want to say, no turf development, and we kind of didn't like that either, because it was a heck of a lot of bark, so if you want to talk about a brown lawn, it's probably mostly because it's bark, and especially when it's young, when the ground cover doesn't have the chance to grow, it looks pretty hideous, so, I think we're probably going to ask for a mixture of grass and, you know, ground cover in the future, just to eliminate at least that part of the brown, but for the ongoing maintenance, it is more of a code enforcement issue, and not a development code.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, existing homes that are letting their lawns die, for what, and it seems to be, on the west side particularly, seems to be very predominant, and lots of people are letting their lawns die, they're letting their greenery die, I was over at Comfrey Apartments, which I was really pretty disappointed in the whole thing, when you, on the street, they're keeping their landscaping alive that faces the street, you go into the unit, they've let all the grass die, they're letting all the plants die, I mean, the place is just, and, you know, there is a part of me, because it's seniors and disabled people that live in those homes, that live in those apartments, and that the owners are so disrespectful to their tenants, that they're just letting all the landscaping go because they saved their lawn, pay their water bill, and so, I don't know if people are letting, have let their lawns die because of water meters, and then thinking that they're saving a lot of money, or are they letting them die because of the drought, and there was the whole publicity during the drought of gold is the new green, you know, brown is the new green, and everybody should let their lawns die, because it really does make our community, I do think it affects the appearance of our community, I mean, I absolutely agree with Mike, and I drive down Elm every day, and Emerald Oak, and, you know, you see it in Quail Hall, you see it a lot on the west side, you think that you're seeing all of these dead yards, and not taking care of the landscaping, and I guess my question is, I'd really like to know from staff if there is a code enforcement issue, is there is enforcement that we, is there a code that we could enforce to, or is it just as long as they keep their weeds in their brown lawn mode, is that all we can do, because at one point I understood that the governor had signed legislation that said that homeowners' associations in cities couldn't go in and harass people for letting their yards die.
You are correct, Councilmember Hewer, there was the rules that precluded cities from using code enforcement to cite individuals for lawns during the drought, so that people could let their lawns die, and you could not cite them, we'll just need to double-check, I think, whether, now that the drought declaration and emergency declaration have been lifted, if some of those requirements are lifted, and I just, I believe some of them are still in place, but maybe not all of them, so we will look into that as far as the code enforcement goes.
As part of that, could you bring back a list of options at the council, wanted
to look at some of these homes, because I know some of the homes you're talking about, they've got dead trees, and they're dead.
Yeah, no, they've let, oh, if you go into Comfrey Apartments right now, they're letting all their shrubbery and trees die.
Well, that becomes a hazard, too, so, I mean, I think there should be, I'd like to look at a set of options possibly.
Yeah, for the multifamily use, I would think we have some code requirement for them to maintain their facilities-
Really sound.
And so that, that's something we can put on our agenda, our radar, to do a site visit and see just how, you know, what part of the code maybe that they are violating, so, we should take a look.
Yeah, I went to visit a disabled friend of mine that lives there, and I was just like, my gosh, what has happened to your landscaping, and I walked around the facility, and I was like, this is terrible, and she says, yeah, they just said, they don't want to pay the water bill, so they're going to let it all die, really, but if you look at it from the street, they're keeping that part green.
And I'd like to see something which you can do on the multifamily, but I think single family is also important, and so if there are any options available, I think I'd like to at least explore those.
I mean, I know at one point I even made, you know, I even brought the issue of, I don't know if it's the city providing bark to cover it, or, I mean, you know, I mean, I know sometimes, you know, we cut down these trees, and we have this huge amount of bark, and, you know, I don't know, something available for, if there's just anything that we can do, because it really does hurt the appearance of our community, it just is, I get as equally upset as Mike when I drive around and see it, otherwise, I attended the cable commission, and nothing to report from the cable commission, so, thank you.
Well, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Lori, where are they?